Call to order Village of Hazelcrest, regular special village board meeting at seven o'clock. Raise your leashes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Trustee Moore.
Here.
Trustee Ramsey.
Present.
Trustee here.
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Slayton.
Here.
President Augsburg. Square please. All hands bow please.
Dear heavenly God, we thank you for this, the gathering of these young people this night. Oh Father, as we enter to the end of this year, we want to bless those who are in the presence of your being on tonight. Bless this village and the board as we continue moving to another direction, to another year. We want to thank you, Lord, for giving us the opportunity to stand before you one more time, and we're asking that you increase that which is given to us, increase the peace in our community, increase the jobs in our community. We're asking that you open up doors that have never been opened before, and dispel all the naysayers, and give us the opportunity to move forward, not only as a people, but as a village. And we thank you for this opportunity, and we pray these blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Any surveying or report? No question. Mayor's report. We're gonna start off the mayor's report and square it in of the youth commissioners. So, Peter and... Section 8. I... Deans.
Are you all together?
Dusally swear. Dusally swear. That I will support the Constitution. I support the Constitution. Of the United States. The United States. Constitution. Constitution. Of the state of Illinois. State of Illinois. And abide by all ethics and required by... By all ethics and requirements. Per the Village of Hazelcrest. Per the Village of Hazelcrest. Cook County. And the state of Illinois.
I didn't do any of it, so you got to do it.
Want to go back? What part do we... Stop again.
I never say my name, so that's why I don't want to say it.
Okay. I...
Jayden Peters.
Dusally swear.
Dusally swear.
That I would support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And abide by all ethics.
And abide by all ethics.
Required per the Village of Hazelcrest.
Required per the Village of Hazelcrest.
Cook County.
Cook County.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
And I... And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
Discharge...
Discharge.
The duties of...
The duties of...
You...
Youth commission.
Uh... To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Need a real quick picture, Clark, please.
Come on, sis. Take your clothes off real quick. Hurry up. Come on, Chief McGee.
Oh, God.
Are you okay?
Hey, everybody. Hello. I was expecting you to come right inside. One, two, three. One more.
Thank you again. Thank you, Father. Happy to say the Village of Hazelcrest joined communities across the state of Illinois on December the fourth, 2017, exactly at twelve noon, raising the Illinois Vice Centennial Flag, recognizing the 200th birthday of the state of Illinois. Next year, December the fourth, 2018, is actually the 200-year birthday of the state of Illinois. We're gonna have year-long celebrations starting this past December. So you'll see different items throughout the state of Illinois, where they'll be celebrating different parts of the state, issues in the state, events in the state of Illinois, and we'll be doing the same things in the Village of Hazelcrest. Now, if there's any citizens that want to, actually a homeowner association or individual that wants to do some activities and get sanctioned by the state, there's a form that we will provide to you, and you'll be celebrating whatever event that is as part of the 200-year birthday of the state of Illinois. And so this is great celebration. I hope people actually want to be involved in it and will be involved in it, and the Village of Hazelcrest will be having many activities during the year to celebrate our 200th birthday. On December fifth, 2017, I met with the new Frostmore 161 School District Superintendent... Superintendent, excuse me, Dr. Dana E. Smith. He's looking forward to working with the village and partnering with the Village of Hazelcrest. And on December sixth, 2017, I met with representatives of ComEd to discuss the pilot program which ComEd will providing free LED lighting to all of the elite, all the ComEd streets in the Village of Hazelcrest, all ComEd poles. A discussion about the program being funded, will be funded totally by ComEd, and also allow the village to decide what type of lamps will... Or on the street lamps in the community. Also, they'll be placing nodes on the top of the lamps, and the conversation that we had the other day, we're discussing what type of nodes we want to go on there. They want a camera, they also have a node that can tell the temperature of the streets, so if the street is cold, you can tell, our public works will know to put salt down there or not. If the streets are warm, the node actually feed back to public works and let them know, hey, you don't need any sauce on this part of your street because it's warm enough and we don't have any slick spots on the street. They also have a node that will actually dim and brighten as people walk by it, or the presence around it, if there's no one there, it'll dim so it can save electricity. We're happy that ComEd decided to use Hazelcrest and only two other communities in the state to initiate this pilot program. I'd like to thank ComEd for having confidence in the Village of Hazelcrest and actually provide funding and the manpower and labor to actually produce this program. So we'll be moving on through the year, and by mid-part of the summer, the LED lighting program should completely be complete. We'll be meeting throughout the process and decide what type of fixtures that we want on our streetlights, because they gave us three different types, and what type of node that we want on there, or if it's a combination of two. So we're happy about that program. Again, I want to thank ComEd for that. On December sixth, 2017, mayors across the United States met to discuss climate change in Chicago. I'd like to thank Mayor Ron Emanuel for hosting the event in Chicago, and I'd like to thank Metropolitan Mayor's and Managing for hosting the breakfast that morning to actually have the mayors come together from around the country to discuss climate change despite what the federal government is trying to do. On December seventh, I met with Cook County President Tony Prankwinkle and the Cook County Council on Economic Development to discuss bringing economic development to the South Suburbs. The council and President Tony Prankwinkle are very supportive of the program in the Southland. They are putting funds together and organizations together to help with the movement of the Southland as a whole. So I want to thank them for their meeting and what they're trying to do here in the Southland. On December seventh, 2017, as a president of the South Suburban Mayor's and Managers, I was a host of the annual holiday celebration. Over forty mayors were there throughout the region, and we were able to have a good time to also discuss things that are happening in the region and how can we make the region better. On December eighth, 2017, the Village of Hazelcrest held its annual holiday tree lighting. I've seen some of you there, some of you weren't there, but I'm telling you it was a great event. We have a hundred participants who came to enjoy our hot chocolate and cookies and the lighting of our tree. The children enjoyed a visit from Santa Claus, and were given stocky stuffers with toys and treats. I would like to thank the Community Relations Commission and the fire chief, Charles Jackson, and the entire fire department for hosting the tree lighting event. You guys did a wonderful job. Thanks so very much. Thank you. December twelfth, 2017, myself along with community director of business communications, Karen Carter, met with the deans of Governor State University, the deans of public administration and public policy. We discussed the, how can we help the Southland again, progress, how can we work with the four-year university that's sitting in our community to actually look at some of the issues that affect the Southland, and how can we address those issues and move the Southland forward as a county is working with us to do some economic development piece. Governor State is excited about the prospect and the possibility of working with communities in the Southland, and very excited to work with Village of Hazelcrest as well. Myself is alumni, Chief Charles Jackson is alumni, and our camera person, Felice, is also alumni at Governor State University. We know the importance of having a university that's involved in the community and in the region, and they are wholeheartedly excited about the possibility. We have laid out a plan that in early April, we're looking to bring economic individuals who deal with economic growth, social issues, and educational issues within the region, where we could have a conversation together to move the region forward. So I want to thank Governor State University for their forward and their vision for the future of the Southland. On December fourteenth, 2014, I met with Boeing, Boeing Airline, along with the Cook County Economic Development to discuss Boeing being involved in development in the Southland. They're a not-for-profit arm. We spoke with the chair of that component of the airline, and we're trying to work to develop an economic corporation out of the Southland, where we actually could work together and stop working as just a town of fifteen thousand here, a town of twelve thousand here. How do we look at the Southland as a region? Because the region, we're very powerful, five hundred thousands citizens in this region. So we work together to grow, we work together to look at education, we work together to look at our issues that we have in our region. We can solve those problems by speaking to each other, being clear what the vision is, and moving it forward. So I want to thank, again, Cook County's President, Tony Prankwinkle, for pushing that issue. And on December seventeenth, 2017, I attended the Hazelcrest Mustang Football Team banquet. Hazelcrest Mustangs is a varsity. The varsity has went undefeated for the last two years. They won the Super Bowl for the last two years of the Will Cook Championship, so I want to thank them. You should give them a round of applause. The things they've done for the community. Now, even though it says Hazelcrest Mustang, believe me, most of the kids are all over the Southland, and that's great, because when kids know each other, they respect each other. So I want to thank the Hazelcrest Mustangs for being so involved in our community, the things they've done in the last two years to really change the face of our community. So thank you very much, and I want to thank Java Rogers, trustee Java Rogers, who's the cheerleader coach of the Mustangs. With that, all that talk, let me drink some water, I need to make some proclamation.
We can help you.
Want to read it for me? Hazelcrest hopes December fourth flag raising ceremony to kick off our Illinois Vice Centennial Celebration. Whereas Sunday, December third, 2017, marked Illinois's 199th birthday, as Illinois became the twenty-first state in the Union on December third, eighteen eighteen. And whereas Illinois Vice Centennial will be a year-long celebration between December third, 2017, and December third, 2018, which will be our state's 200th birthday. And whereas Illinois Vice Centennial will remind us of all that everyday, all that everyday Illinois, amazing things are born, built, and grown. And whereas Illinois Vice Centennial will honor the many ways that Illinois has influenced American history, achievement, culture, innovation, and more. And whereas Illinois Vice Centennial is a once-in-a-lifetime invitation to fall in love with Illinois all over again. And whereas together we can inspire pride in Illinois and show the world what makes this state so great. And whereas our communities should encourage citizens, organizations, businesses, congregations, and cultural and educational institutions to participate in this year-long celebration by submitting applications for endorsement for the events and projects by the Illinois Vice Centennial on the participate page of Illinois20.com. That's page Illinois200.com. And whereas the Village of Hazelcrest endorses the efforts of the Illinois Vice Centennial and encourages all citizens to participate and celebrate an upcoming year by visiting Illinois200.com and using the hashtag, hashtag, stole my stuff, #IllinoisPro. Therefore, I Bernard Augsburg Jr., President of the Village of Hazelcrest, and board and the Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim December fourth, 2017, as Illinois Vice Centennial Flag-Raising Day in Hazelcrest to kick off the year-long celebration for the state's 200th birthday. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have the legal here, police.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board, citizen. Just a couple things real quickly. First of all, I want to make sure...
She has some manager's report. Okay, go ahead.
I want to make sure everybody knows that we're doing a lot of public service announcements on the local cable channel. We got our two excellent videographers that are doing a tremendous professional job of creating PSAs for us, and what I'm doing is, I'm taking time out to expose our different officers, so that I'm not always on the PSAs. I'm getting different officers to do PSAs, public service announcements, to get our information to the community. So the most recent ones we talked about was safety during the holiday season. So it's on the website, so we can go there or the YouTube page, but just some fundamental things that you need to make sure you're looking out for. The biggest thing now is packages. Everything's getting, people are ordering stuff online and leaving packages on their doorsteps. If at all possible, if you're not home, first of all, get the automatic notifications when they're delivering your packages. UPS and most of them have that, so that they'll text you or email you. If you're not gonna be home, get a neighbor to get your packages for you or have them delivered to your workplace if at all possible. So that's just some real fundamental things that you can do to be safe during the holiday season. We won't have another meeting before New Year's Eve, so we want to make sure that we also did a public service announcement on, it is a felony to shoot a weapon in the air on New Year's Eve. It is a felony, and just common sense says what goes up must come down, and you can actually kill somebody by shooting a round up in the air, and it can travel for miles, and you don't know where it's gonna go. So we just want to make sure that we're safe, both inside and outside, on New Year's Eve. And once again, there's another public service announcement on that. And then finally, our Citizens Police Academy. There's also a clip on that on the website and on the Facebook, excuse me, and on the, it's on the Facebook page for the police department and also YouTube. But our Citizens Police Academy, the deadline for registration is January the third, January the third. You can get applications either online, you can print them out, or you can stop at the police station and get an application. It's free, but we are doing, you have to have a background check done, and that does not cost you anything, but the deadline is January the third. The classes will take place on Wednesday nights. They'll be Wednesday nights from seven to nine p.m. The video that we have recorded gives you all the details, but if you have any questions, you can feel free to ask me. So that's all I have. So Merry Christmas to everybody. Bless you and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Public Works. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So today at five o'clock, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a special meeting to consider the request for a special use permit for a daycare facility in 17100 Dixie Highway for Suites F, G, and H. The daycare facility does not fit the criteria for the permitted use for a B2. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted today and sent their recommendation to the village manager for consideration. We had discussed it with the village manager, so this point is consideration.
That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board of Trustees. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Manager. Just three things, actually. Every municipality that is a part of the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency pool has to undergo every four years a thorough risk assessment, and I want to actually thank Chief Davis, Deputy Chief White, Chief Jackson, Elliott, and John Albano in his absence because the village completed theirs last week. So we're still waiting for the results, and it is our hope that we'll do as well or better than we did four years ago. Second thing, on November sixteenth, the state actually amended Public Act 10554, which is the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act. It includes section seventy-five, which pertains to government entities. So what the act was amended to mandate that all governmental units adopt within sixty days of November sixteenth, which is January fifteenth, an ordinance or a resolution establishing a policy that prohibits sexual harassment. Part of that mandate is, of course, a prohibition of sexual harassment, details on how an individual can report an allegation of sexual harassment, including options for making a confidential report, whether it's to a supervisor or to HR, an ethics officer, or the village manager, a prohibition on retaliation for reporting sexual harassment allegations, including whistleblower information. It also includes the consequences of a violation of that prohibition on sexual harassment. And I'm happy to say that the village's existing policy, which is a part of the new employee manual that was rolled out earlier this year, actually meets all mandates, so we do not have to actually do an ordinance or a resolution. So I'm actually happy about that. I did confirm that with the Illinois Municipal League's Assistant Council. And third, last thing is, the village just completed its 2018, or open enrollment for effective day of January first, 2018, so our last open enrollment session was today. So the employees, just so you know, have until December thirty-first to make elections, to waive or to make changes altogether. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As usual, mayor's report is first, and stole my thunder again. There's other groups and agencies trying to steal the thunder also. So just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. We did have a successful tree lighting. Children this time had a very, very wonderful time. They did some arts and crafts and that kind of thing, so it was something that was very nice for the children. And thank you to the Community Relations Commission under new presidency this year, and they did a great job. That's my report.
Thank you, Chief. In your state, yeah, good. Community Business Development.
Good evening. I would just like to say that on January nineteenth, age options will have a legislative breakfast here at the Village of Hazelcrest. They're asking all seniors to come out between the time of eight-thirty and ten o'clock. If you have a question, please give me a call. That answers my report, but I would like to wish everyone a Happy Holiday.
This time, open for public participation for items on the agenda.
I move that we open for public participation for items on the agenda.
Second, I trust Slayton, second by trustee Ramsey, to open the floor for public participation for items on the agenda. All's in favor? Aye. Want to speak to any item on the agenda? It's the time to do so. Come forward in three minutes. Forzel.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Trustees, Happy Holidays. My name is Rod Baishir, longtime resident of the village. I rise to speak to item number F on the agenda regarding the motion to levy taxes in an assessment for 2017. I have a question, and I don't know if that would be allowed. It may be for the financial people.
Yeah, it's gonna come up.
Okay. Understand that there is going to be an assessment of about eight-point-six million dollars. This is the first time in the history of Hazelcrest that I'm aware of where the police pension, fire pension, and other expenses have been paid for out of a bond issue as opposed to our general revenue fund. And so I understand that four-point-eight million of the tax levy is going to go to the corporate fund, about one-point-three million to police, to fire protection, one-point-one-and-a-half million to police pension, four-hundred-seventy-seven thousand to fire pension. My question is, are these one-time payments into those pension funds? Also, if you're taking note, what is the funded status of those pension funds? And moving forward, how are we going to continue to make this contribution, assuming that the fund will not be fully funded at least until 2041? Is this a one-time levy, or is this an ongoing thing that will affect the taxpayers of the Village of Hazelcrest? The last thing I'd like to ask you to provide, if you will, is a copy of the full document outlining what you're planning to do with those funds. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Is he gonna answer those tonight? Thank you.
Good evening, Happy Holidays to the Board, everyone. As long as we're answering questions on this, could you break this down for the resident as to what this is going to mean to them financially? What this tax levy is going to mean financially? You're holding your EDA flat for twenty-five years. Is that logical? Can you explain why you would do that with the way the marketplace is today? We've got foreclosures and things of that nature, so I'd just like to have a better understanding of that, because it shows that we're gonna hold it for the next twenty-five years, flat to what it was in 2016. So I don't understand that, would like to understand that. And then just with typical resident, what's this gonna mean to us? You know, as we go forward with who's running our country today, we worry. Well, I worry, I hope everybody else is worried.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna be able to, you know, deduct interest the way we've been doing it, that, you know, his tax law is going to hurt us deeply. So I want to understand, and I think all of the residents would like to understand, what this is going to do to me, and, you know, as a person in this village. So if you don't mind explaining that, can you do something?
Anyone else? Can I get motion for public participation? Move to include public participation. Can move by trustee White, second by trustee Slayton, and include participation. All's in favor? Aye. With the count, we'll go over once we get to the levy, because there's other stuff first. He's gonna explain the levy, and those of you guys who want details, it's best to do it one-on-one, because he can go up here and talk about it, and people can be lost. So your questions, trustee Hill, I'll make sure he's around to ask those in detail. The general stuff that former trustee Baishir asked, he will answer that in this going through the process, because it's not exactly the way to explain or seem there, so he will definitely...
Mr. Mayor, can he kind of, I don't know if he can, but if you can't, I mean, for the person that can't get here tonight, that, what does this mean to the bottom line? The EDA, he can answer, I don't mind going through it with him, but I think for every resident, can he, what's this gonna do to my pocket?
Well, he can answer that, but I'm saying he can't, because everybody has a different...
I understand, but in general...
But he'll answer it in general.
Yeah.
And I want to remind everybody, we've been talking about this for five months. We did have a truth and taxation meeting that we sent out to everyone in the community to actually have discussion, because we know for a fact that...
How did we send that out? Because I did not. I didn't get anything, how did I?
We sent it out many, many different ways, I'm gonna tell you, because we pushed it, because we wanted people to come have a conversation about it, because we know that in a board meeting, you can't have a confrontation back and forth as possible, be here all night long. And so we had a truth and taxation meeting, we actually sent invitations out, notified everyone, and no one responded. But that's kind of normal when people are just, you know, they're busy lives. There's no other way we can do it, and we did everything we could to make that happen. So we're not trying to get around anything, but we definitely will, and I've talked to some individuals already, and we can actually, if they could come to the village and they want to actually have a sheet, they'll say, how much your house is worth, how much your tax will be. And then we'll give you, we'll make sure that's available to anybody who comes, and those I told already, they will get their sheet, you can kind of look down at the sheet and tell you. But he's gonna give you overview of that, exactly what the tax is for, how it broke down, and why we got into this situation, have to pay the police and fire, you know, as something else that really pushed by the state. And most villages have kicked this can down the road ever. We never have funded police and fire. Nobody, I don't think anybody in the state, most villages, they get around it, because we didn't have to, we didn't have to report it. But the state said, for now, you have to report this, and if you don't report it, we're gonna ding you every year. We're gonna hit you every year. And so Hazelcrest decided to move forward on it. But let's get through this agenda, then I'll let George go through the process. And if you don't report it, we're going to ding you every year. We're going to hit you every year. And so, Hazelcrest decided to move forward on it. But let's get through this agenda, and I'll let Mr. George go through the process.
Sure.
Thank you so very much, everyone. A, trustee Rears.
I motion to approve the special meeting minutes of November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, and December twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Move by trustee Rears, second by trustee Moore, to approve the special meeting minutes of November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, and December twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rears.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slater.
Motion, Carrick.
Trustee Rogers.
I move to approve accounts payable number eighteen dash fifteen dated December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
Move trustee Rogers, second by trustee Grant, approve accounts payable number eighteen dash fifteen dated December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rears.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slater.
Yes.
Motion, Carrick. Trustee Slater, approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Postpone. Postpone. Postpone, sorry. I move to postpone item number C, motion to approve a redevelopment agreement with AP Deli.
A second.
January.
To the first meeting in January.
The move by trustee Slater, second by trustee Ramsey, postpone approval of the redevelopment agreement with AP Deli, common address one ninety-two twenty-three and one nineteen twenty-five West one hundred and seventy. Any discussion on this item? Postpone to the first meeting in January. Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rears.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slater.
Yes.
Motion, Carrick. Postpone this one also. Trustee Grant.
Yes, thank you, President Roseberry. I move to postpone to the January, the first meeting in January, a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a land lease agreement by and between the Village of Hazelcrest and Echo Site LLC.
Remove by trustee, I mean, move postpone by trustee Grant, second by trustee Ramsey to postpone to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a land lease agreement by in between the Village of Hazelcrest and Echo Site LLC. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rears.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slater.
Yes.
Motion, Carrick. Trustee Moore.
Thank you, President Roseberry. I motion to adopt an ordinance number thirteen, two thousand seventeen, granting a special use permit for construction of a cell tower in the M dash O R office research and compatible use district, thirty-four oh two through thirty-eight forty-eight West one hundred and eighty-third Street.
Second.
The move by trustee Moore, second by trustee Slater, to adopt an ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand seventeen, granting a special use permit for construction of a cell tower in the M R office research and compatible use district, thirty-four oh two through thirty-eight forty-eight West one hundred and thirty-third Street. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rears.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slater.
Yes.
Motion, Carrick. Trustee Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number fourteen, two thousand seventeen, for the levy assessment of taxes for two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen fiscal year for the Village of Hazelcrest, Cook County, Ohio, State of Illinois.
Second.
The move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Rears, to adopt an ordinance number fourteen, two thousand seventeen, for the levy assessment of taxes for two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen fiscal year for the Village of Hazelcrest, Cook County, Ohio. Mr. George.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Thank you for having me. Just, I think, overview of the levy, and hopefully, as I'm overviewing, I can answer some of those questions. The proposed levy, nine million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, is a seventeen percent increase over prior year. Prior year was seven million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. The majority, that increase, one point three million, one million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, is comprised of basically three components. Pension fund increases, pension fund increases are seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. The debt service is four hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. So, the debt service component is thirty-four percent of that one point three million dollar increase. The pension funds is fifty-six percent of that increase. So, the general operations of the village, that increase from last year is one point nine percent. So, when we talk about the general fund, the police and fire protection, public safety components of the village, the operations of the village, that component is going up at one point nine percent. What the village is doing is taking advantage of current interest rates and financing capital improvements through this debt issue. There's a component of that, the financing is more than just the village administrative center. There's other infrastructure involved in that and other long-term capital plans. Those funds are segregated out for capital improvements from that foundation. The pension funds, the increase, when we look back a couple of years, Mayor, you mentioned this, the reporting changed, right? And units of local government were required to put on their balance sheets, to calculate and put on their balance sheets this liability. And the awareness and focus shifted significantly when that happened. And unlike the state and many other units of local government, the Village of Hazelcrest has taken action. They've adopted a formal funding policy, and that formal funding policy is saying that we're going to commit to fund that pension, those pension liabilities, that obligation. And we're going to do that over the next, twenty forty, to the year twenty forty, funded at a hundred percent. That is what the increase is, right? That is that fifty-six percent. We're not issuing the bonds. The bonds are nothing to do with the pension fund. The bonds are capital improvements, infrastructure. As far as, it is not, so this is, while this seventeen percent is a one-time increase, we are, increases in the future will be off this base. So, we have, we know what the, what that formal funding policy, we're going to look at, the village board, part of that policy is to look at, over a five-year period, what the requirements are from an actuarial standpoint to fund the pensions and adjust, but we're going to maintain that funding level. So, while it is a one-time increase, it's a continued funding policy that will continue in the future. And, you know, we're talking about fiscal accountability and fiscal stability, and it's something that, you know, more units of local government should, within the state, should be known.
Can you ask a little bit of what trustee Jack asked earlier? Can you give a little picture of what it, how it would affect, I know you can't go over the top of the road, but how it would affect the normal citizens?
Oh, yeah. You mentioned, you alluded to the fact that we did have, from the financial advisors, put together a valuation based on property values and current EAD, what the impact would be. And a hundred thousand dollar home, that impact of those two components, ninety percent of this increase would be about two hundred dollars. Sixty-five percent of that, one hundred and thirty-five dollars, would be the pension funds. And about seventy-five dollars would be the debt service. So, you know, that's one example. But like you said, that, there's a chart that we put together from the financial advisors to give you.
We'll make sure that people want to read this.
Can we begin on the, on the, one second?
One of the, John, what if, I think we need to emphasize the fact that our increase was due to actuarial versus what the state was looking at.
Yeah. So, the Illinois statutory minimum contribution, and going right off the actuarial report that we have from our different actuaries, is that the statutory minimum contribution methods are not intended to provide a better system of funding for beneficiaries, employers, or taxpayers. It was put in place in two thousand eleven, and it was intended to provide short-term budget relief. Whereas, the past funding policy is a long-term view, a long-term perspective of funding of the pensions. So, the actuaries put together a report that discussed the differences between statutory minimum contribution and the contributions that they're recommending the village make. So, these, the levy is based on the actuarial recommended contributions in order to obtain that funding level by two thousand forty.
Thank you, John.
And then, the truth in taxation was, I can't speak to, but it was, I can't speak to all the notifications, but it was filed in a, it was filed in a local paper, which paper it was filed in, but it was filed on a local paper.
Thank you so much. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rears.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slater.
Yes.
Post the pass. Can I get a motion for public participation on any item? Move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Rogers, open the floor for any item. All in favor?
Aye.
This time, if you want to have an issue, if you want to speak to, you have three minutes. It's time to come forward. Floor's open.
Does that include items that were previously discussed?
I mean, if you speak to them, I mean, if you have a question, it won't be any of your minutes if you can't.
Yeah, well, so, and as I was saying, what's your name again?
John.
John, I was just, I was saying to John, under the ordinance that you are about, that you just passed, that you're about to pass, it, under Article three, section twelve, it indicates that the truth in taxation notification should be done by pamphlet or in a newspaper that generally is circulated in the community where the taxation is going to take place. Now, I don't know how, I didn't receive it, and I've heard a number of other people say they didn't receive it, so, and I understand you, Mr. President, to say that you've had, you've been talking about this for five months, and you've done all notifications.
If you did online.
Well, it says in pamphlet form or in a newspaper that generally circulates in the community where the taxation is going to take place.
We can follow up with John.
So, I would argue that we haven't been sufficiently notified. However, I understand you probably have everything you need to carry forward. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's me again. You know, the trailer parks that sold, I gave the information to the clerk. It really bothers me when rich people take advantage of people that, you know, just like middle class or, you know, people. Gabe Crayhill, the man that's owned the dilapidated trailer park, the reason he didn't do the repairs or the city requested a fence and some of the trailers be fixed up, is because it was just a tax write-off. He owned it for a few years, five or seven years, and it's just all taxes to him. And so, I was lied to about my electrical system, and I guess there's nothing I can really do about it. And so, it just, I just bring it to your attention, I was told the city wants a fence around the place, which only seemed natural to the other trailer courts in Dixmoor had them. And the fence that's along my property, there's three big trees that push the fence over, you know, because they're, you know, they grew over for twenty, twenty-five years. So, I don't know, that's about it, except for one thing I was going to say, I was telling you about how shoddy the construction that they do there. There's some stairs that were required by the city, you know, for going in or out of the mobile home. And the one appeared to be, like, burnt, and they just put some boards over it, and then that's supposedly good enough. And then, the other stairs, there, nobody, no man, woman, or child would walk down the stairs. They would fall. And so, that's basically all I have to say, is it's upsetting to me that somebody that's a multi-multi-millionaire, and then it's just a tax write-off, and everyone there is unhappy, and the manager, you know, she does the best she can, but it's just a bad situation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion for close?
All right. I got it, I got it. I live in Carriage Hills. You know, you're talking about raising taxes, and our streets are so bad over there, within another year or two, it'd be almost impassable. I was here a couple of years ago, and you told me that you always plan on fixing it. Nothing has been done. So, I want to know when will they plan on, or when will they ever come over there and fix those streets over there? Because that affects our property, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? May I get a motion for close participation?
Move that we close for public participation.
Second.
Move by trustee Slater, second by trustee Rears. All in favor?
Aye.
This, in general, the, we've done over six million dollars worth of streets, more than Hazelcrest has ever done. We set up a street issue where the worst streets go first, and we've been going down that list, and I'm sure you, we will get to your street, and if you actually come to the village and ask us, we can show you exactly where your street is on the list. Because we do red, yellow, green, based on the streets that we fix in the village of Hazelcrest. Some of the infrastructure we're talking about doing is, it's going to take money to do that, and that's some of the stuff we're looking to move forward within the village of Hazelcrest. Far as the truth in taxation, we did say on the paper, and then we put on the website, we did talk to people, went to homeowners association, talked to people about it. Those who allowed us in, and I think we have the one most transparent administration's ever in Hazelcrest. It's unbelievable, all the stuff that you go to cable channel, those who can get cable, look at it, and the stuff, the information that we put out there. And being out in the community in general, the number of businesses that have opened up in Hazelcrest this morning, any time in the history of Hazelcrest. And so, we're working to actually move the village forward. You know, it's not about what we do now, it's what we do for the future, what we'll be behind. It's always easy to say that you don't want to spend money on this, and you don't want to do this with your community, and it's hard to actually do the right thing because no matter what you do, you're going to have naysayers, and who else is going to agree with you? And some people are never going to agree with you. But one thing we've tried to do on this board is actually make everyone aware of each and everything that we do. We have a vision to move the village forward, and that vision's unfolding every day. And actually, those who want to see it, want actually to see the vision, see it every day. You can't drive down Casey and see a difference. You can't drive down one hundred and seventy-fifth street and see a difference. You can't go to any strip mall in the village of Hazelcrest and not see a difference. Because when you used to go to one hundred and seventy-fifth street, you didn't have anything in there. You can't even get in there with traffic right now. Hazelcrest proper, the buildings that used to be vacant and torn down and scared to walk over them, buildings are gone, and we have a plan to put actually new businesses in there. We've been working diligently to change the look, the feel, and the safety of our community. And those people who come almost to this meeting every month, see it. Every senior we take care of, the STEM program that we offer for the youth, we get eighteen thousand dollars for Comcast. I guess some of you didn't know that either, to actually do a STEM program so kids can learn about computer and programming. We have three, maybe two or three kids out of the dietary area. We have three, maybe two or three kids out in the D.C. area, Village West area, but we publicize it every day. Our biggest problem is communication, and people reaching out and touching the communication that we provide. I know it's hard, because we busy every day. Some of us work and come home, and that's all we can do until an issue come up. But I'm going to show you this. A long time ago, people said, well, we got elected here, you're going to have a liquor store here, you're going to have a game place here. None of that's came to fruition. But some people tell the same story and believe the same tale. It's not going to happen. We're going to grow. We're going to continue to be Hazelcrest proud. So I want to say to you guys this evening, have a happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, outstanding Kwanzaa. Can I get a motion to close? Trustee Ramsey.
Second.
Second by Trustee Reas. All's in favor?
Aye.